If we could call the Finance Committee meeting to order, if we could read the roll.
Yes. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Colas asked, so Mr. Lind?
Here. Motion approved the agenda.
Second.
Don't forget the minutes, and the minutes.
And the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second for the agenda and the minutes of November 2nd, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. One of you two'd like to take those travel requests, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll do the travel request.
Yes, sir.
Jason Hernandez, Medical Officer, IEMSA Conference Des Moines, on the 12th of November, amount not to exceed $220. And Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, 2016 Cedar Valley Coalition, Washington DC, February 22nd to 24th, 2016, not to exceed 1785.
Second.
A motion and a second on those two items, any questions, comments?
No, I just have one quick question. Is why are we approving this so early? Because you get a better hotel rate, is that the deal that I saw in the attachments?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, get a better airfare.
Oh.
I think the hotel rates are pretty much set, we get better airfares by doing it early.
Okay.
And I think Keith helped out, no, I don't know, but...
You said you told me no Keith.
Just trying to plan ahead, we've, in the past, we've gotten better airfares doing it a lot earlier than, and once the date is finally set, we know when it is, there's no reason to wait.
Okay, thank you.
You flying out of Waterloo, Noel?
Yes, I am.
God bless you, my son. Anything else? Seeing none, any other questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those items are approved. David?
Preauthorizations, we have Central Garage, $5,546.57 for directional bore conduit to fuel distribution kiosk. Central Garage, not to exceed $7,500 for fiber optic cable to fuel distribution site. Leisure Services, $4,200 for youth hockey equipment to be used in WYHA recreational hockey program, and paid for with funds from the Fred G. Merrill Fund. Leisure Services, $16,645 for electrical service being run for lighting at straw ball dynos. Public Works, $4,335.59 for base modem and control stations. GPS sanitation, $13,516.16 for GPS AVL vehicle modem. Sewer, $9,212, plus $300 shipping for replacement. AMA electric actuator for FEQ basin. Traffic, not to exceed $33,500 for yellow and white water-based traffic paint and reflectorized beads.
Second. We have a motion and a second on those items, any questions?
I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
On sanitation, the GPS AVL vehicle modem, is that something new we're doing?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director, this is new, it's vehicle tracking.
Okay.
So it can, it's joined up with the 800 megahertz radio system that we put in, so it's not cellular base, so there are no monthly fees. But this, I think, will allow us to improve our tracking, as well as improve our routing for our trucks, be able to identify fuel savings as far as for idling, et cetera, so.
Okay, awesome.
Mark, Mark, is this for 16 vehicles, is that what I'm seeing, or is...
16 vehicles.
Okay. And then also, could we back up to Central Garage, the fuel distribution, is that for the new facility?
That's for the new facility, for the new kiosk, so we'll have to move all of our monitoring software and hardware from this existing Central Garage, or the old Central Garage, to the new kiosk.
Didn't we talk at one time about having an east and a west side fueling station, did we?
We did, we weren't, that, that needs to be reworked, gaming didn't look positively on us for that, so.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those items are approved. We also have one line item amendment, and that is for Mid-America Energy rebate, amount of $5,393.11 for the improvements at Young Arena. Finally, we have the bills payment for this week, they are $1,703,218.26, that's
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bills will be paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to all of those of you that are in chambers tonight, we have a good turnout tonight, it's always nice to see, and those that might be watching us on our public access television channel also, welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Waterloo City Council this November the 9th. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Ms. Cola, Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment, a silent reflection of prayer would be much appreciated, thank you. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. David Jones, our Ward One City Council person. Mr. Jones, please.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, may all be seen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move that we approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of November 2nd's regular session.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding tonight's agenda or last week's minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have three proclamations tonight, and we're going to start with the World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Ms. Melissa Gibbert, Melissa, are you with us? And anybody else that you might have, just come up, come through the door over here, and come up to the front, please. Good evening, you're Melissa? Nice to meet you. Amy, nice to meet you guys, come on, just kinda, so that we can face the camera. We are, with the help of these two ladies present tonight, going to recognize World Pancreatic Day, is that correct?
Yep.
Very good, okay. Pancreatic Cancer Day, I'm sorry. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,960 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States. 40,560 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer, with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digit at just 7%. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, with 73% of patients dying within the first year of diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 410 deaths will occur in Iowa in 2015, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related deaths in men and women across the world. And whereas, there will be an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015, and whereas the good health and well-being of Waterloo's residents are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer, and the research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Melissa, I'm gonna give this to you, and I'm also gonna give you a microphone, I'm hoping you're gonna say something else about, about this event, and you have to put it right in front of your mouth and talk, okay, so.
My name is Melissa Gibbert, and I'm the advocacy chair for the Cedar Falls Pancreatic Cancer Action Network affiliation. Amy Jordan here with me is the affiliate chair. On behalf of the Cedar Falls Pancreatic Cancer Action Network affiliation, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the Waterloo Cedar, or City Council this evening. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization creating hope through research, patient support, community outreach, and advocacy for a cure. I wage hope here today for my family and friends. I've watched my dad fight for his life. I've seen friends lose their spouses, parents, aunts, uncles, cousins, siblings, and children. I've seen the pain in their eyes, and felt the weight on their shoulders after being told, get your affairs in order, you don't have much time. It isn't only my life and the lives of my family members who have been touched by this disease. This is a problem that is affecting our entire community. The incidence and death rate for pancreatic cancer are increasing, and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second leading cause of cancer deaths by 2020. We would like to thank Mayor Clark and the Waterloo City Council for your important contribution to the national fight against pancreatic cancer. By declaring November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Waterloo, we're helping do critical work of making the public aware of the disease and its truly lethal nature. We hope that working together with you, we will be able to continue to raise awareness, support patients, families, and find a cure. We would like to invite everybody to wear purple this Friday in honor of World Pancreatic Cancer Day. You may ask yourself, why should I wear purple when I don't know anybody with pancreatic cancer? And the answer is, because at one point I didn't either. We encourage you to visit our website, www.pancan.org, to learn more about pancreatic cancer, our organization and its mission, the research we fund, and the comprehensive, no-cost services we provide to patients and their loved ones. Thank you again for supporting our cause and helping us wage hope by raising awareness about pancreatic cancer.
Melissa, you're more than welcome. God bless you guys, thank you for what you do, okay, it's appreciated, thank you very much, thanks. Okay, we are doing Adoption Month, and Krista, hey, fell, Krista, come on up, hey, Phil?
Yes.
Come on up. Very good, good to meet you.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. This is a Waterloo, Iowa proclamation on Adoption Month. I bet that that's this month.
It is.
Wow, good for me. Whereas, the state of Iowa recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption. And whereas, more than 101,000 children in the United States foster care system are waiting to be adopted. And whereas teens who will be transitioning to adulthood have an especially urgent need for adoptive families or permanent connections to caring adults. And whereas November is a special time of thanks and public awareness for adoptive families, in the Iowa Department of Human Services, Iowa Kids Net, the Iowa Foster and Adoptive Parents Association, and the numerous individuals, public organizations, and private agencies who work diligently to make sure every child has a safe and stable home, and whereas every successful adoption is a success story in which all Iowans can share, and our future depends on our commitment to helping all children develop to their full potential. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 2015 as Adoption Month, and urge all citizens to learn more about ways we can positively support youth in our community. I'm gonna give this to you, and I'm also gonna give you the microphone, and I would imagine you have, hold it right in front of your mouth, close, okay.
Well, I'd like to thank the council for recognizing Adoption Month as, or National Adoption Month as November, and I would like to encourage anybody, if you want more information about becoming a foster or adoptive parent, to go to iowakidsnet.org. There are lots of family, lots of children that need a loving family, and the Waterloo area specifically needs homes that are open foster homes, as well as homes that will take in teenagers. So we're always looking for more homes.
Very good, very good, okay, good. Thank you for coming, again, thank you guys, oops, I missed, thank you guys for what you do. Take care, thank you. And certainly, last but not least, is Radiologic Technology Week, Chris Messner, and it says, possibly others as well, so if all of you guys would like to come up, that would be fabulous. Just come on up, ladies and gentlemen, just kinda get a half moon around me here, right, and go all around and fill in and move, and, yeah, there you go, perfect, perfect. Good to see you. Yeah, come on in, get right, get right here. This is an annual thing, we always have fun with this. Chris comes to see us, and, and once a year, we do an annual Radiologic Technology Week. It always challenges me to say those two words together fast, but I somehow make it most of the time. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas maintaining top physical condition is an important goal shared by citizens, medical professionals, and qualified practitioners specializing in the use of radiation and the treatment of disease. And whereas, a safe radiological environment is made possible through the dedication and care of radiologic technologists, and whereas the contributions of these radiologic technologists, nuclear medicine technologists, diagnostic medical sonography technologists, and radiation therapy technologists in our state are helping our citizens live longer, healthier lives. And whereas, these contributions are the result of education, research, and greater understanding. Now therefore, be it resolved, be it resolved that I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of November 8th through the 14th as Radiologic Technology Week in Waterloo, and encourage all citizens to recognize this event and to participate in its observance. Chris, I'm gonna give this to you, and again, the microphone here, I will give you, there we go.
Thank you.
You bet.
National Radiologic Technology Week is celebrated annually to recognize the vital work of RadTechs across the nation. The celebration takes place each year during the week that includes November 8th, to commemorate the discovery of X-ray by Wilhelm Conrad Rankin on November 8th, 1895. The week-long celebration calls to the important role medical imaging professionals play in patient care and healthcare safety. Celebrated professions include CT, MRI, ultrasound, interventional radiology, diagnostic radiology, mammography, radiation therapy, and nuclear medicine. As president of Area Four of the Northeast Iowa Society of Radiologic Technologists, I would like to thank the City of Waterloo, Mayor Buck Clark, for their recognition and support.
Thank you, sir. Let me, I, I just, let's, let's do a little bit of introduction here. Are you guys all students, or are you RadTechs? I like that, that's a lot shorter. Okay, so that's, that's cool. Are you guys students, or what?
They are all students except Paul. Paul is our newly-appointed director of the school at Covenant Medical Centers.
Why don't we just, real quick, just, just say your name and where you're from, okay?
I'm Katie Majeski, and I'm from Greene, Iowa.
Okay.
I'm Bethany Christensen, I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Wow.
I'm Kelsey Higginson, and I'm from Jamesville, Iowa.
I'm Lindsay Becker, and I'm from Manchester, Iowa.
I'm Claire Tuttle, and I'm from Cherokee, Iowa.
Okay.
I'm Paul Kitchell, I'm from Crowwell, Louisiana.
Wow, okay.
I'm Sarah Chenet, and I'm from Knoxville, Iowa.
I'm Samantha Glazier, and I'm from Sterling, Illinois.
Okay, guys, congratulations on what you've chosen to do in your profession, and hopefully, if I'm ever laying on one of your tables someday, you'll take good care of me. Thank you guys very much, appreciate it. Thank you, guys. All right, I need to do one more thing. I did not see Dave Bozen come in, but our November Team Member of the Month was Dave Bozen, who now works for us in the Waterloo Police Department Property and Evidence Room. Dave was a longtime Waterloo fireman, retired a few years ago, and is now in charge of our property evidence room. And Dave is just one of those guys that, just as a hard worker, he comes to work every day and he gets things done. And with this transition that we're going through with the Waterloo Police Department, moving its evidence room from the third floor in the jail, which they're initially, the old jail area, and they're just bursting from seams with evidence stacked on top of each other, we're moving across the street to the old garage area, Dave is ramrodding that, and has just done an incredibly good job organizing that and getting that done, that move done. And we're not done with it yet, but anyway, I was honored to recognize Dave last week for his great work as Team Member of the Month for Waterloo for November. So Dave, if you're watching, thank you, you do a great job, it's much appreciated. Okay, we can get on with business.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B3. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Vice Chair. Our bills this week are $1,703,218.26, that's 1,703,218.26.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Here again, it's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, and let me just, there was a, there was a request last week, gentlemen, there's no lady here tonight, that we speak into the microphones again, and I know if everybody could just really kinda make an attempt, it might seem awkward at times, but if you're speaking, if you try to get right up close to the microphones and speak into it, I'm sure that our audience members would greatly appreciate that. So thank you very much, let's do the public hearing, item number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's a request to vacate, sell, and convey a 1,920 square foot portion of an existing alley located north of 1317 West 11th Street to Curtis and Carrie Schultz for $200, and to establish a permanent driveway to an existing detached garage with a development agreement.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item, item number two on tonight's council? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion then to close this hearing and receive the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Kurt and Carrie Schultz to vacate a platted 1,920 square foot alley.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Very good, we will do the second hearing next week. Resolutions, please? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Iowa Department of Natural Resources' wastewater disposal system construction permit application fee form, and construction permit application Schedule A, general information for the fiscal year 2016 Northeast Industrial Park sanitary sewer and water main extension contract 900, and authorizing mayor to sign said application.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the 2001 City Code by repealing Title IV, Public Health and Safety, Chapter IV, Letter Control, subsection 4-4-1, definitions, enforcement authority in its entirety, and inserting lieu thereof a new enforcement authority to Title IV, Public Health and Safety, Chapter IV, Letter Control, subsection 4-4-1, definitions, and amending Chapter V, Municipal Officials, subsection City Attorney, 1-5D-2D, additional duties in its entirety, and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 1-5D-2D, additional duties.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we have a little overview on what this is, and who it's submitted by?
Sure. Oh, it's not submitted, did you submit this, or did I submit this? Who submitted it, Susan? I think, I think me, Councilman Schmidt, and just, it just didn't get put on there. The code enforcement department, as I sent a message to all of you a couple of weeks ago, is moving back downtown, and for, I think probably since the code enforcement division was first adopted in the ordinances, it states that it's under the building official. It has moved a couple of different times to the police department, and then down to the sewer department, and has been under the auspices of those other entities without ever being officially moved in the ordinance section to put it under the right buttonhole. With this move, it will be under the city attorney's office, under Mr. Zellifer, who is anxiously awaiting their arrival. And it's basically just clearing up and making official the authority of which the code enforcement officers will be working under, moving him from the building department to the city attorney's office. Very good, are there further questions? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
It passes, right, yeah, the motion passes. Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Okay, very good, we will take this up for the second reading next month, item number five, or next week, I'm sorry, item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number five is a exception to burning yard waste application, and that is, application comes to us from Chris Hess on behalf of Control to burn a large trash pile 30 feet in diameter located at 2950 Newell Street in December, weathering and weather and wind permitting, and that comes to us with a staff recommendation denying the application.
Okay.
Second.
Their motion is second. Chief, why don't you fill us in on the details of this before we have any further discussion?
Pat Triller, Chief Fire Services. The City of Waterloo has a perpetual burn ban, and the exceptions that we allow to that burn ban are prairie grass and fireworks, and those are the only two that would go along with Iowa administrative codes to allow. Mr. Hess is here in the audience right now that, who wants to burn. I did go out and inspect the pile, and for one, it's a very large pile, and then it's fairly close to some businesses out there on Newell Street, certainly within a quarter mile, that could affect some of the services of the Crown Group, their makeup air, and their rooftop units could send smoke, depending on which direction the smoke is coming from the pile. So it is a recommendation, myself and the Fire Department, that we deny this request to burn.
Very good, thanks, Pat. Mr. Hessie?
Yes.
Yes, would you like to make your argument, please?
Sure.
Just step to the microphone if you would, please, just repeat your name and give us your address, please.
Chris Hessie, I work Control, it's at 2425 GT Drive in Waterloo. I have done, been at Control 14 years, I did call all the council members before I applied for the burn exception. The biggest thing is the cost involved in cleaning the mess up, like I told you all on the phone. I understand 13 years since anything's been approved. Our company bought the property as-is, along the fence, behind all the tall grass, we found a bunch of downed trees, and we cleaned the mess all up and put an organized area to hopefully burn it. So, hopefully, everybody sees our side of it and can look past the exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hessie. I'll just remind counsel before we take a vote and before we make comments that, at least two times under my administration, in the last six years, we've had larger requests come to us, such as this, one from John Deere, one from a major developer that wanted to clear some brush, and council has denied those two, both of those two applications, so. Yes, sir, Mr. Morrissey?
Chief Triller, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, do they ever weigh in on this? If they have in the past, or on this situation, if they were to weigh in on it, what would be your best guess as to where they would stand on this?
Well, excuse me, I do think that it's in violation of Iowa administrative code because it's within a quarter mile of surrounding buildings. I did err in 2011, I did allow a burn out on Shallows Road, and I thought it would fall under an exception for agricultural use, but the mayor did receive an email from the DNR stating that we were not following chapter, or Section 563, Chapter 23 of the Iowa Administrative Code. So I erred there, and I've turned down other requests that haven't come to council. I respect Mr. Hess's side of things, but I do think that it would be inappropriate to approve the exception for this burning.
Are you saying, then, that we would be in violation according to Iowa Department of Natural Resource rules?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further comment? Mr. Schmidt?
So, Pat, burning is not a statewide ban, correct?
Well, administrative code starts off, the very first section of it says, "No person shall allow, cause or permit, open burning of combustible materials except as provided", and then it lists exceptions. And certainly, what we do with residential recreational fires is listed right in administrative the code, so we're in line with it there. So it is, it is a statewide code.
So banning is burned everywhere in Iowa?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that. I mean, so if this property was out in the middle of nowhere and there wasn't structures close to it, then it could certainly be approved at the county level.
Isn't banning allowed in Evansdale?
Burning?
Burning, I'm sorry. Burning, banning?
I'm not aware of what goes on there.
Okay, I was out there at an event this weekend, and somebody was certainly burning something. It sure smelled like a lot more. And my point is, how far from the edge of the city limits is this facility?
I had engineering check on it through the clerk's office, I think they're probably within a quarter mile of being outside of city limits, but they are definitely in city limits.
And so what's going to be their options to deal with this? Do you know?
Well, I, this is probably maybe directed towards them, I think just would be hauled away.
We'd probably have to move it outside of limits and burn it there.
Rather than, you're not going to take it to landfill?
No, that's much too possible.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Further? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. A quick one, so, I think the chief set me straight there, I thought it was, you know, so close to the city limits that it probably wouldn't have been an issue, but he says since it's close to structures, it potentially could cause a problem with their rooftop units, correct?
Correct. We had a fire over Christmas a few years ago out of 4,000 block of Hess Road, a number of bales were on fire in a barn, and that actually shut down the Isle of Capri with their rooftop units sensing smoke, it shut down their ventilation system. So that would be a slight concern for Ryder Logistics and the Crown Group that are fairly close to the burn pile, within a quarter mile.
But you could somewhat manage that based on wind and, as you mentioned in the request, wind and weather, that type of thing, correct?
That, yeah, he filled out the requests, not me.
Well, no, no, but I'm just saying that that could be managed somewhat, based on the wind.
Sure.
And the pile is a clean pile, I know in the past we've had requests where there was all kinds of stuff mixed in with the brush, is this, I know you said you overlooked it, is this?
I wouldn't say it's a clean pile. There's lumber in it, and there's chain link fence in it, but...
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
And George With, State Park, last summer, put a similar request in, I went out and denied it, and they chose not to come to council to try to get council approval.
All right, thank you.
But, chief, it's still against DNR policy then, right?
Correct. There is a home, probably a third, less than a third of a mile from the burn pile, a private residence.
Okay, so basically, they'd have to push it out further into the county to make this feasible?
Push it out of the authority of Waterloo Fire, I guess, I don't, I just don't think it, it won't work for us, in my opinion.
Well, it's not just us, it's the DNR as well, right?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I erred in 2011, and I'm not going to make that mistake again.
And I'd forgotten that letter, now after you mentioned it, I remember that letter.
Just one question on the whole...
Chris, come to the microphone, please, so I can hear you.
As far as the DNR portion of that, if I, if the person living in the house signs off, does that override the DNR's position, or is that just, that's the rule, and that's the rule?
No, there is, there is a process that you can go through to get clearance from people within a quarter mile.
Yeah, because that...
That would help, that would help your cause on the...
Part of the trees are from the guy that lives right there, so it'd be very sensible he would approve it, so, just had to ask him, back to the whole wind comment Steve made, you know, I want to make sure that the wind would be the correct direction for the burn, wait till winter when we have snow covering, we don't have a fire that gets out of control, a spark starts, a cornfield on fire, or something to that effect. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
There's other issues there, too, in my opinion, there's Newell Street that's fairly close, and we've just been very, very consistent over the years to not allow burning, with the exception of fireworks and prairie grass.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
And I'll just note that a yes vote approves the burn, a no vote denies the burn. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Hessie, your request fails, and I'm sorry that that's the case, but we have been very, very consistent with this, and I understand that there's a cost to you, but, boy, we'd be setting a pretty dire precedent if council had passed it, so, thank you for coming, and thank you for doing what you're doing out there, and I'm sorry that we couldn't help you on this issue.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's a short meeting tonight, and that's the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. I am going to ask all of you tonight, we have a very special presentation tonight, I was going to cancel oral presentations tonight altogether and do this, but I decided not to, but I would ask you, please, that, this is a really cool thing we're going to do tonight with this presentation, I would ask you, if you just have to make presentations tonight to come ahead, that would be fine, consider maybe holding off until next week if you can, but if you can't, come on up, and the mic is open for you to come up, and please do, though, keep your, keep your comments to three minutes, if you would.
I'd like to have my three minutes, and then your answer after my three minutes. Well, one question is, it was brought up in a newspaper, some of these businesses...
Just give us your name and address, please, sir, I'm sorry.
Duane Eilers, 1205 Bishop Street. The same question is, it was brought up in the paper, is that some of these people were grandfathered in. At the end of my time, I'd like to have somebody tell me what grandfathered in is. Also, being stated that everybody was pushed back till the 1st of May, is my client pushed back till the 1st of May, and he can use my lot till the 1st of May, same as everybody else? Question. The next thing is, why is only, why is only the car dealers being issued this notice when there's a lot of small businesses, a lot of trucking companies, a lot of other businesses that are strictly all gravel? And I pointed out a whole lot of them to Mr. Hart, that were all on gravel, the same as the rest of us. I'd like somebody to answer that after my time is up. Is the tickets that were given to my client on this lot going to be rescinded, being that everybody else is pushed back to May? Nobody else was given a notice, nobody else was given a ticket? Is the tickets rescinded on the people that rented my lot? Question, I'd like an answer to that. The other question is, finally, after four years of getting the electric turned on to my house, is the mayor going to turn this over to the police for an investigation that Mr. Youngblood busted into my home with a crowbar, did a false inspection, then the same inspector is the one that cut my electric off after it was approved and finalized, and approved by the court, which I showed to the mayor? Is something going to be done on that? That's a question, I'd like to have an answer to it. Why is the date pushed back to May now, when it was a big hurry to force my people off of my lot? All of a sudden, it's pushed back to the 1st of May? So everybody has a chance? Well, how come my people didn't have a chance? My people that rented my lot were given tickets, they were given a notice and tickets, both, nobody else. Why is there only 60 notices sent out when I showed 100 to Mr. Hart?
Mr. Eilers, I can't remember all of your questions, so I'm not going to answer them. No, I'm not going to do anything about an investigation on your break-in. If you had a crime committed at your residence, come to the Police Department and file a police report. As far as your property, you were originally contacted by Code Enforcement sometime in the late spring or early summer, and I can't remember when. You came to my office, I told you that I would extend, and the Code Enforcement Officer at that time gave you 30 days to clean up the property. You were not issued tickets, you were issued notices to clean up the property. I extended that 30 days to 90 days, so you had 90 days to clean up your property, and you eventually did. I mean, your property down there looks great now, so thank you for doing that. As far as why we're only doing car lots, we have to start somewhere, and we have a limited amount of resources, and I think the biggest part of the violations right now in car lots, the grandfathering, I don't know what the situation is with grandfathering. That's why in that letter, there was a name and a phone number that was given that says, "Please call with questions." Our intent here is to sort out the car lots that will be, could be, should be grandfathered in versus those that are in violation, so we will try to do that. I can't remember any of the other questions. If I didn't answer them, please come to my office, and I'll do that at some other time. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
John Chergren, 1715 Robin Road, I'll try to make this short. And this is basically, I don't know if you can answer this question tonight, if Mr. Zellifer takes over the Code Enforcement, does that mean that it's going to cost us more money or less money?
There'd be no change, there'd be no change in costs.
So we get an attorney for the same price as the department has?
There you go.
And no hours or extra, or whatever?
There's no expense to it, John. I tried to pay Dave more for doing this, and he wouldn't. Right, Dave? I'm sorry, I'm being light, I shouldn't be. Yes, sir.
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street, I respect your request to not do this tonight.
Thank you.
But last week, I asked about what the need was for the new chain link fence down at the grass and ranch disposal site.
Mr. Dryer, can I answer you?
Yes.
And then we'll, okay, the cost was $15,350. It was approved by the Finance Committee on September the 8th. The reason is to secure the area to prevent illegal dumping when the area is closed. There you go.
Okay, I guess, I've been down there many times, and I've seen illegal dumping, while there's a person at the gate, et cetera.
Okay.
So you're really not stopping anything for $15,330.
Okay, thank you.
And there's still no grinder or sifter back there.
It's $350, but who's counting? Yes, sir?
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, one thing that's been catching my eye in the paper has been this Conagra. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but they're moving out of Omaha, they're moving their headquarters to Chicago, they're going to start laying off people, is that the same company that we just gave a bunch of money to out here?
You bet.
Did anybody in our organization know that Conagra has been going through this problem?
Absolutely, it's really not a problem, it's a downsizing and moving, Jim, if you'll do it in reverse, you noticed something in the paper last week about Syngenta? Syngenta's closing their Waterloo office and moving to another office in the area. Conagra did the same thing, except they chose Waterloo. So this is a very positive thing for Waterloo.
They said they're having a hard time keeping up with their competition as far as cost-wise, so they got to cut costs, so I just wondered, I hope that don't happen here.
Me, too. I think we're in pretty good shape. Is there anyone else that needs to talk tonight, need to address mayor council? Thank you. We're going to, we're going to start, I'm going to start with, before we get into my presentation, there was an election last week, and, again, the turnout was much less than I would have liked it to have been, I wish we could get more interest in local elections, but I really, really want to express my thanks and congratulations to not just the folks that came out on top of the elections, but to everybody that got involved. but to everybody that got involved. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and, you know, depending on what level, folks kind of lay themselves out, and this year was a marathon year for forums and debates and appearances and so forth, and I know all of the candidates worked incredibly hard and should all be congratulated equally, both those that prevailed and those that didn't. And it's worth naming, the mayoral candidate was Frank Magzeman and Leah Morrison and Wayne Nathan, and then we had Mr. Hurt and Mr. Hurley. And with that many people, it was almost inevitable that we're going to have a runoff, so a congratulations goes to Mr. Hurt and Mr. Hurley, that will be in a runoff election December first. And to Mr. Magzeman, Ms. Morrison, and Mr. Nathan, God bless you guys for stepping up and putting your name on the line and being willing to participate in the process. That says something for each of you, and it is much appreciated. And for the council candidates for Ward Four, we had four candidates in the Ward Four. We had Agnes Kress, Rosetta Robinson, who else? I've lost my, Jerome Amos and Chris Schwartz.
So in that race...
Jerome Amos and Chris Schwartz prevail, and will be in that same runoff on December first, but Agnes Kress and Rosetta Robinson also need to accept our congratulations and be proud of what they've done. And then in Ward Two, for Carolyn Cole's seat, we had Robbie Haddaway and Bruce Jacobs. So the two of those, in that race, Bruce Jacobs won that race and will be our next Ward Two Councilman. Councilman Schmidt, congratulations to him. He ran unopposed, so he was able to win that race. So to all of you guys, it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't say, "Thank you and congratulations for doing that." Mr. Nathan, please, quickly.
Wayne Nathan, 548 Clover. I want to thank you for recognizing all this. Yes, we did put in a lot of time, we've had about nineteen or twenty forums. It took a lot out of us, and we were glad that was over, I'm sure, by the time it was all done.
Yeah.
And congratulations, I want to say, congratulations to Mr. Hurt and Mr. Hurley for their effort and so forth. One of the things that happened during this, neither one of us really attacked the other. It was pretty clean, and I want to thank everybody for being that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nathan, appreciate it. Okay, we're going to end tonight's regularly scheduled meeting. We have an executive meeting after this, but on something that I just, I just think is incredibly cool, incredibly positive, just incredibly fun, if you will. It's something that I've never been involved in before, but we're going to, kind of, it's not us making a presentation, but Joel, if you and Cindy would probably come up, or Joel, if you don't want to, you don't have to. I know you don't like to come up, but, and Bruce, why don't you come up? Jerry, maybe you can help Bruce come up, and let's come through the door, and what I'm going to be, I'm going to give a little background as we, as Bruce comes up, and many of you that are regular, either viewers or visitors, recognize Bruce Cazer as being a regular attendee at our council meetings as of late. Bruce and I go a long, long ways back, and I'm not going to dwell on any of the, of the details, but in 1981, Bruce, is that right? Eighty-two, Bruce was clerking at a local liquor grocery store down on Lafayette Street in Waterloo, Third Shift, trying to make a buck, was a victim of an armed robbery, and got shot in the process. I, my partner and I happened to be the first unit, police unit on the scene, and when I saw Bruce, I just thought he was dead. I didn't think there was any way Bruce was going to live, but he did. And he's not only lived, he's lived well. He's contributed and continues to contribute and contributes to be a, continues to be a viable citizen of Waterloo. As you can see, Bruce is in a wheelchair, that's fairly obvious. This is Joel and Cindy Shepherd, back, I don't know, a few weeks, several weeks ago, actually, we've been working on this for a while. Joel came to me and says, "Mayor, we've got a mobile, a mobile chair that used to be Cindy's mom's that we aren't going to use anymore." Cindy's mom passed away, so they don't need the chair. They could have put it on Craigslist, or put it on a garage sale, or sold it, or whatever. They said, "We'd like to give the chair to Bruce if he would like to have it." So I asked Bruce. Bruce had to think about it a little bit, and then, then we decided that Bruce decided, yeah, he'd kind of like to have the chair. So Joel and Cindy, and actually Cindy's sister, are donating the chair, and we still had an issue. We had to come up with a battery, I believe, and then we got a battery, and we couldn't, we didn't have a battery charger for the thing, and, you know, not surprisingly, probably the chargers for these things are pricey, and we couldn't come up, find a place to get a charger. And I thought, you know what, maybe Jim Walsh, because of his association at VGM, selling hospital equipment, could come up with something for us. So we were able to not only get the chair, but, hand me that, would you please, guys? A brand-new Invacare battery charger, that's a brand-new unit that is compliments of VGM Corp. So Bruce, God bless you, my man.
Thank you.
Okay, so Bruce gets a new chair, and I don't know how the transition's going to go. Jerry is Bruce's good friend, but we're going to do that, and Cindy wanted to say a couple of words, so...
I think you said a lot of it.
Well, okay, yeah, speak right into the, speak right into the mouth.
Bruce, on behalf of my family, we'd like to donate this to you, and I give you kudos for coming to all these meetings and having such a positive attitude. My mom would love this. And I think you're on the board for the ADA now, and my mom was in a wheelchair for forty years with MS. I totally get it, and I'm so glad you can use this, and just be careful, because it goes really fast. We found that out in the parking lot. So on behalf of my family and my mom who's not with us, I hope she gives you a good ride.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, Cindy, thank you. Joel, anything? No? Okay.
I'm not speaker.
Okay. Guys, this is, this is just really cool, really, really cool. So we are, I don't know what to do next, Jerry and Bruce, so what I think we'll do is, maybe Bruce can come down. We're going to adjourn to executive session, and after we do that, we'll... I got you back here, Bruce. Okay.
What's that?
Grace, Bruce wants to know if he's got a helmet he's got to wear by then.
Full face mask.
Okay, why don't, I tell you what...
We'll go out front here and we'll...
Yeah, let's, yeah, why don't you...
We'll let him drive it back out.
Yeah, there we go. Why don't you go on out, Bruce? And, yeah, would you? There you go. Don't go away, we got to get, we got to adjourn.
Yes, I did remember his name.
There you go, Jerry.
Well, I appreciate it. You are good.
Yeah. Be careful.
Well...
You know, I, ladies and gentlemen, I think I forgot to mention in all of that, that presentation, if I could have your attention just a second. Wayne? Wayne? If I could have your attention, I totally forgot to mention in that, that both Joel and Cindy are employees of the City of Waterloo. Cindy works up in the planning department, or in the, in the building department, actually, and Joel is one of our maintenance engineers and has worked, both of them have worked for the city for a long time, so what, what great folks. So anyway, thanks again. There you go. Somebody you want to...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hurt?
I move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Also to accept oral comment.
Oh, move to accept oral comments and to adjourn to executive session.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are we, or Madam Clerk, Mr. Zellacher, are we adjourning in proper authority?
We are going to discuss litigation this evening under Iowa Code Section 21.5, so yes, we are.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.